They have the added benefit of doing so in a bilingual community and have gained lasting bilingual and biliteracy skills that prepare them for an increasingly global and diverse society. Most importantly, Nuestro Mundo embodies a commitment to social justice that has been very important to our family. Our children have had the opportunity to learn from a very diverse staff and be immersed with diverse peers in their learning. We hope that other Manona Grove families can continue to have the opportunity to join this wonderful school located right in the heart of Manona. Thank you. And then Miles is next, I think?
Yes.
And just like every other public school, there's lots of germs and he's homesick. So I brought his comments written and Ila was gonna read them in... Do you want me to read the English first? Okay. I'll read the English first and then she'll read the Spanish. "I like Nuestro Mundo because I learned how to speak Spanish and I made lots of friends. I want other kids to go to Nuestro Mundo because learning Spanish is really fun and you also get to learn how to be an ally, which is really important in the world at this time."
A mi me gusta Nuestro Mundo porque aprendí cómo hablar español y hice muchos amigos. Yo quiero que otros niños van a Nuestro Mundo porque aprender español es muy divertido y también puedes aprender cómo ser un aliado que es muy importante en el mundo en este momento tiempo.
Muchas gracias.
Very good.
Muchas gracias.
I understood you. I'm glad I answered.
I got quite a bit of that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and then Ila has her own comments.
Me encanta Nuestro Mundo.
You wanna say it in English too?
I love Nuestro Mundo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're required in order prior to the board taking action this evening to have a formal notice of a public hearing. So that would really be in addition to our normal public appearances, so it'll be an opportunity for any additional discussion. And the other thing I guess I would recommend would kind of is that for our action item, I would recommend that we do move item M1 up to following the public hearing and take for the board to consider action in that order.
Yeah, agree. Anyone have questions about that? Does anyone have anything to discuss?
We have moved that item up?
Yes.
Right now?
Correct.
Is there... That's a... Do we have to have evidence or things like that to make that request or is it just action of the board? I mean, do we have to have prepared data and...
Yep, so with regard to the waiver?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need just action of the board based upon the recommended motion.
But no rationale or reasons why?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
So are you ready to entertain a motion?
Do anybody wanna make a motion?
I would make a motion authorize... Let's see. Um, authorize the district to request waivers related to the charge of school lottery preference provisions in Wisconsin statutes one, eighteen forty, parentheses, and G, and requirements for open enrollment in Wisconsin statutes one, eighteen fifty-one, as they relate to enrollment of Monona Grove School District students in the Nuestro Mundo Community School.
So move.
For a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call, go.
Roll call, vote. Dean?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a point of clarification, then Madison School Board will be taking up this item for action later this month for the similar or the same motion. And then if they approve the same motion, we'll send a joint waiver request between the two districts to DPI for consideration.
Is Madison in support of it?
Um, I think I can answer that the administrative recommendation is to support it, yes. Yep.
I can call.
So... All right.
All right. Move to the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's presented.
Second.
I wanna pull the... Just I just wanna pull the resignations because I just have one quick question and I can't ask it without pulling it, so I'm not really questioning that we have it. I just... It would be subject to approval of staff retirements, resignations. And there's no vote on it. It just somebody if they request it just gets pulled. So you vote on everything but that and then we have to vote on that after I ask my question.
So do we have to amend the motion to approve the consent agenda and just say a motion to approve items one, three, and four of the consent agenda?
Well, you could.
Let's have a motion to approve one, three, and four.
You got it.
Any discussion on one, three, and four? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. It's moved to number two.
I just wanted to confirm of the staff... Did you just tell us again? Of the staff resignations, there are two of those that will take effect during the school year, is that correct?
Correct.
And their letters are now posted?
Yes.
So you can see why that is.
The what?
Their letters are now posted, so you can see why that is.
Oh, okay.
Up there.
Okay.
Earlier.
Great. I didn't see those earlier. Okay. So I would move approval of the staff retirements and staff resignations is presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recognitions.
Okay. First of all, the retirements that you just approved, the retirement of Michelle Swanson, who is an at-risk teacher at the high school, and we certainly wanna congratulate Michelle on her retirement and the school year and wish her the best. And then additional recognitions, Bee Paulie, a fourth grader at Winnicott and winner of the school-wide spelling bee, participated in the CISA II Regional Spelling Bee and finished in the top six out of forty-two spellers. Congratulations to Bee. We had GDS students competed in the Southeast Regional Science Olympiad Tournament held at UW Milwaukee at the end of January twenty-fifth. Twenty-seven total teams from seventeen districts competed in the B Middle School Division. We had many participants with that and congratulations to all of our students and the board has the list of all of those names. Outstanding Young Person Awards were presented to eight Manona Grove High School students at the Thirty-Sixth Annual Martin Luther King Junior Youth Recognition Breakfast. Awards were presented to students of color that exemplify a commitment to academics, extracurricular activities, and volunteerism. Again, congratulations to those students and again, the board has the list of all of those names. Manona Grove High School Dance Team recently performed at the state tournament and for the first time in school history earned a trophy by finishing in fifth place in the jazz competition. Senior Caitlin Palmire was also named to the Division Two All-State Dance Team. Congratulations to the entire team and coaches. And lastly, local Manona Grove in the news, Wisconsin State Journal recently covered an event with GDS's Project Unify and NBC fifteen reported on a unique partnership between a marketing class at Manona Grove High School and the Cottage Grove Chamber of Commerce. And congratulations to the teachers and students involved in those projects and we're certainly glad to be able to share those or have those shared with our community.
Moving on to correspondence. Announcement of board candidates. The following four candidates have qualified as candidates for the spring election at April seventh, twenty twenty. There are three seats available, two three-year terms and one one-year term up for election. The two candidates who receive the highest number of votes will fill the three-year terms and the candidate with the third highest number of votes will fill the one-year term. Candidates will appear in the following order on the ballot. Lorraine Gage incumbent, Elizabeth Cook, Susan Fox incumbent, and Chris Bondren. Next is the superintendent report.
Okay, so last month, the board approved creating the ad hoc school naming committee. So just wanted to share that we did have our first meeting the past month and listed the committee members that have been appointed to that committee. The first meeting was real informational to review the charge and just have a general discussion, you know, about some of the school facilities. The most important piece, you know, task of that committee is to really come up with the process in order to determine how to make recommendations to the board with regard to the name of the new school. And then from there, we'll certainly keep regular reports so that the board have an opportunity for feedback as they move along as well, so that you have an idea of what they're working on and perhaps can provide some direction before we, you know, produce a final recommendation to the board. So...
Well, I just had a couple things. I really appreciate, Dan, you giving us that report. I encourage as board members, if you get a chance to go and listen to the committee, it's really a really neat group of staff and parents, I think. I do wanna let you know that understanding that I come from a little different piece, I'm on a senior foundation board here in Manona and, you know, had a very elderly mother. And I think when I think about the history, my mother was actually on the school board during the time they built the Manona Grove High School. I did make a request to the board president and to the superintendent, who actually was the superintendent who was charged with recommending the members, that we include one or two more members, one of them having history in the district that has a feel within the district about the names of the building and, you know, there are no seniors on this committee, sorry. So I would encourage us to think about that. I've sent correspondence to both the board president and the superintendent about that. The other thing that was interesting is in our composition, in our charge, I wanna make it very clear because, and this is on me, I somehow, when I went to the meeting and the committee started to discuss naming and possible renaming of all the other buildings in the district at some level or another, I was a little surprised by that. The charge clearly authorizes that. It clearly authorizes them to make an advisory recommendation to the school board for the naming of district facilities, including the new elementary school. So I think as a board, we need to be aware of that. I did not realize I had done that. I thought it was just about the school and since we kind of had talked about it, I probably didn't read the scope carefully enough and I'm responsible for that. So I apologize to the community for that. And the committee will consist of up to fifteen members, including district presidents from both Manona Cottage Grove faculty and staff students and a board member. I would have been very interested in serving on this committee. I've lived in the district for forty-one years and our three children graduated from the school district. And I've studied the district and been involved in a lot of the things even before coming on the board. And so I would have liked to have had an opportunity to be on this committee. There were two board members who were appointed and I think as a board member, I was a little unaware of kind of how the residents were chosen and I was a little sensitive about the senior thing and that was personal, I apologize for that. And then a board member and there are two. And I don't know that we actually as a board received an opportunity to say that we were interested. I'm on one committee right now and I know that the other board members are on two and three, so I think maybe it would have been helpful to at least ask if we wanted to be on it. And I really respected my fact that you reported out tonight and I think it would be helpful for you to report out because it is very clear that members of the community and some of them elected members of the community are very interested in this committee. So if you'd just report out kind of what the discussions are and how they're talking about that. And then Dan and I had a discussion today about the documents and I totally understand why it was prepared, the way in which it was prepared, but it says it lists each of the school buildings in the year it was built and the year renovations were made. And it says Manona Grove High School, year of origin nineteen ninety... Year built nineteen ninety-seven and that is true. That is when we built the new high school. But the actual year of origin of the high school is nineteen fifty-five. And I just think that's helpful when you're... It was built after the state law required a community with a great school to have a high school or join an adjacent school district. So it's really a noble step that this district took at that time and I'm pretty sure Dean will remember that. So it would be nice, particularly when I think that the committee as represented may not have... I mean, definitely this committee is not gonna have a history back to nineteen fifty-three and nineteen thirty-seven and some of them that not back to nineteen sixty-three. So I just think the updated history component about the buildings is a very, very helpful document. I just ask that we update that a little bit. And I, you know, I ask the board to stay interested and involved because it's a really interesting committee to watch, have a discussion. Thank you.
Just for clarification, so knowing that the school was built in nineteen fifty-three, how would that help with the school naming?
So let's say if you were considering that the building was built in nineteen ninety-seven, so in terms of a name, who would changing that name affect? It would affect kids, students from nineteen ninety-seven on and then possibly community members that would have been involved at that time. There's a history piece here. I mean, when I was a kid, we used to do... I went to a different grade school. We used to come over and do track meets at Nichols School with Mrs. Henkel. I mean, some of us have those memories. So having, I think, a historical component on that committee, as you say, well, we could call it Manona Grove Middle School and that was suggested. I mean, it was just a discussion, that's all it was, you were there at that meeting. I might say, let's look at the history first and have a better understanding. And Katie did present some of the history components.
Gotcha. Thank you.
But again, I was approached by several community members who didn't know about the committee, didn't know they were gonna discuss naming it, possibly changing the name of other schools and were very concerned about that. So I think we need to be very open and transparent as we move forward with the community about the discussions that we have in that committee.
Anyone else? Okay. Go ahead to move to our board reports. First, state education convention. Anyone who attended, if they wanna say one thing, if they learned about others and things.
In the past, each board member used to... We just kind of... And I don't know if you still wanna do that, that's up to you. Went around and kind of mentioned the programs they went to and so I had five thoughts, not one thought, about what I learned. And one of them was about the presentation that you did, which was absolutely excellent. And I thought it brought great thoughts out, but I'd hate to trade that off with the data in, data out. So is it possible that we could just go around and do a quick?
Sure. Start over.
I didn't go.
Oh, you love that.
What did you learn today?
Will you give me your three minutes?
I forgot the name of the program. I wanna...
Yeah, sorry. I was...
That was great.
I saw several things. The thing that was the most interesting to me was that several years ago, I attended a presentation given by several folks from the Verona Grove Schools where they talked about a program that they were starting to put in place, which was they had worked with a group to sort of reduce the gaps and produce... Increase the opportunities for their students of color, particularly in high school. And the focus was at the time was AP courses. It sounded, the approach they were taking, which was to look at the barriers of individual students, start by surveying students, look at the barriers of individual schools, students, and look at ways to break down the barriers, sounded at the time a very sensible thing, but they didn't have any data on it or much data on it because they were just starting a program. Well, they gave another presentation this last time around, yeah, this last time around, and where they had four or five years of data. And they had... What they had done is they had shown using this program that they had substantial growth in participation in not just students of color, but all students in their AP courses. And not only were the participation rates going up, but you know, they saw no... There were passing tests, people who were passing tests, you know, went up. And they saw, you know, in addition to improvements in closing the gaps, they saw improvements in their, you know, even for their white middle-class students and for their, you know, white low-income students, but they saw substantial gains in their African-American and their Hispanic students, you know, right across the board. It's a very impressive program. When we're talking about addressing the gaps in this district, you know, what we... No, it's a little hard to figure out what it is we need to do, but here we have a program which seems to have pretty solid data that in our low schools is working and that we could take on something that, you know, we know where his reasonable confidence works, I think would be a great step for this to do now that we have the data from the low that seems to show the improvements.
I was the delegate and our board that wanted to talk about agreeing about Resolution twenty to get rid of the Native American logos and mascots. Two hundred and fourteen decided no. And so social media stuff got into outrage and of course, you know, we voted for it, but we had to let people know that every school district has one delegate. This was not the biggest school district gets the most delegates. This is not what it is. And it was kind of frustrating and so it just happened and I had to cool out some fires on social media about that. And so it moved on into my panel discussion the next day. And what I talked about equity in smaller school districts here in Wisconsin, that they may not seem like they need equity, but they're the most that need it right now. And I gave an example of growing in a predominant, just maybe all-white neighborhood and you get your kids and you grow them up and they learn, they go to school, they're topping their class, they're preparing for college. However, they have a sense of people of color by judging them from movies, media, TV shows. So when a kid goes to college, white kid, gray kid, but doesn't have a clue of a culture of any person of color, can say the wrong thing and probably get hurt. Whose fault is it? Well, that's the small community because they did not at least try to do anything cultural to prepare students for the world. And that's what I put out there. It doesn't... It's not that hard. I'm not saying that a whole white school district needs to just throw a black history course and force them one. But it is needed that they need to have some sense of some type of learning of different cultures and not being... Seeing it to be and judging people by what they see on TV and like that. So we had a great discussion on that. Several small school districts came and board members talked to me and I keep in contact with them and someone actually wanted me to come speak and I said, well, I'll see if I can get those days off. But it is needed and to learn how segregated and how segregated Wisconsin is, that we beat the whole South, I mean, not just one state, all of them. It's just horrible. So it was a great meeting of the board members talking about these issues and seeing what I can do from a distance to help out. And then that's when I announced I was running for state senate. Done.
That was cool.
I was not able to go most of the days as well, but on the last day, I was able to go to the legislative update and I believe at that one, the Beloit Jazz Band was able to play and they were phenomenal. They were really good. I was in awe of how great they were. Also at the meeting, they talked about the importance of school board members and what we do and they had a panel of school board members that had been doing it for twenty-plus years and they received awards. And I know one of them from Milwaukee Public Schools was one of the persons that received an award. Another thing they talked about is superintendents and how important it is to retain our superintendents and also how there are very few superintendents and that they move around a lot. So it's best that, you know, we work with our superintendent. All right. I went to the pre-convention session on Tuesday on equity and then some other presentations, including the one Peter mentioned, and I, in fact, I brought this equal opportunity schools, an extra copy for you, Dan, because they're the ones who worked, some of the people who worked with Verona. And they have a software program they use to... Where students do surveys and a big piece of getting kids to take these higher-level courses is not just looking at their test scores or their grades, but student interest and sometimes teachers just encouraging kids. And so some of the student survey work that they do will show up for students, kind of what their interests are and, you know, if you look, if guidance people or teachers look through it, you can... It prompts you to have discussions with kids who maybe wouldn't think to take those classes. I thought it was pretty neat, you know, the... And they're interested in working with more schools in Wisconsin, so I'll pass that on to you. And then I also went to the equity meeting that which Andrew spoke and they also had an American gentleman and I went, I followed that up with David O'Connor from DPI did a whole session on that. And interestingly, Lorraine was at Capitol today and they were discussing some assembly bills related to American Indian Studies. We do have Act thirty-one that requires that public schools...
And a big piece of getting kids to take these higher-level courses is not just looking at their test scores or their grades, but student interest. And sometimes teachers just encouraging kids. And so some of the student survey work that they do will show up for students, kind of what their interests are. And, you know, if you look, if guidance people or teachers look through it, you can, it prompts you to have discussions with kids who maybe wouldn't think to take those classes. I thought it was pretty neat. And they're interested in working with more schools in Wisconsin, so that's not on you. And then I also went to the equity meeting that, at which Andrew spoke, and they also had an American gentleman. And I went, I followed that up with David O'Connor from DPI did a whole session on that. And interestingly, Lorraine was at Capitol today and they were discussing some assembly bills related to American Indian studies. We do have Act 31 that requires that public schools deal with American Indians, blacks, and Hispanics, but then as all, as part of the social studies curriculum, that tribal culture and sovereignty is included. We have 11 federally recognized nations in Wisconsin and that that be included. But there have never been really model standards developed, so some of this legislation is trying to get at that. And it was interesting, Susan went to a session that included bullying, and the number one group of kids who are bullied, more than any other group, are our Native American students. And so, you know, one of the points that they, that was made in the session of which the gentleman was with you on, and then I heard again, was if you look up, and I thought this was interesting because I'd never thought about this, but if you Google American Indian or Native American, you'll tend to see historic pictures. People think of them as historic people and are less aware that they are actually still here. And they do have nations, they do have distinct rights. And so there's a current push at the assembly level at least on just beefing up the instructional program to make people more aware. And I, it was, it was very interesting to me and they mentioned some videos and other sources. I brought back a bunch of maps, which I have to drop off at our, with our social studies people, of where, you know, where these tribal nations are located in Wisconsin. And because I, you know, we're all kind of aware of it, but it's just interesting to see, to think about some of the challenges that they face. Yeah, and I went with, those were the ones I found most interesting. I went to some other ones as well, but I'll stop.
Susan, again, went to some, you know, part of the fun of this is that it's challenging to try and sit at a table with people that you don't know so that you can hear their questions and kind of what their experiences are. And that's a really great part of the workshop. The pre-workshop that we went to, that Susan talked about, was called reframing the achievement gap. So again, they're looking at achievement gaps similar to what we are. Equity and Excellent for All, it was an excellent presentation by Percy Brown and with his assistance with the usual group, which was just absolutely incredible. It was this amazing blend of history and, and then out of the history element, developing initiatives to move forward in eliminating the achievement gap. And they did a great job for the entire amount of time. And one of the things that Percy talked about was, he discussed the positive impact of encouraging more minority students to participate in honors, advanced placement, which is exactly what we talked about, about with the US people, and rigorous classes along with clubs, activities, and sports, besides basketball and football, I mean, all of things. He encouraged the collection of data, which I've asked for repeatedly, on participation. And we do get a lot of that from Jeff Schreiner, which is very helpful, but often we don't break it down, sometimes we do, to assist the board in moving forward to encourage participation. So again, this is a lot of what US talked about as well. I went to the bullying workshop, it was prevention to create healthier and safer schools. Talked about the basic stuff, what's bullying, you know, how do you deal with it? It's statutory required that you deal with it, we have a policy on it. I think it would be helpful for us to review some of the, some of our thoughts about bullying. What groups are bullied most? Native Americans, LGBTQ, special education, non-English, and non-English speakers. Really? So that was kind of interesting. And we have a statutory, direct and statutory responsibility to prohibit bullying, it's required by law. So when we get that annual report, you may want to make sure we get enough expansion of that to have a feel about how we're dealing with it. Then we had a general speaker, Scott McLeod, who was pretty good, who talked about technology and student learning. Then I went to, of course, I was tuned into equity and data. I went to data in, data out, and the presenters were very specific about one of the keys to school improvement work is the effective use of data. And the gentleman from US also spoke about, you've got the equal opportunity school people, about you've got to have these numbers to show that you're having improvement. So when I talked to, I went to the Verona workshop, and that's why Peter had encouraged me to talk to the, to the actual individuals who had helped Verona, because the superintendent said to me after they've been doing this for a year, we're just not seeing any real change. And he said, I'm so disappointed in this. Well, think about it, you're trying to encourage all kids to take AP classes and they're sophomores or juniors and they're trying to get somewhere in a certain way, they're not really going to change their curriculum up. So it really is a two- to three-year window before you really start to see that improvement. And now they're really starting to see it and they're feeling really good about it. So CSU 7 and 12 said, it's really important that you get your data and you tell your story to your stakeholders with your data. Then I went to policy development, which is always a little boring, but it's something I need. So, and then Andrew was amazing. So they, all the speakers talked a little bit about their experiences and the importance of conversation about equity. And Andrew, particular for me, helped identify the challenges in forming and encouraging these conversations. And I really appreciated that. I was really glad I went. The other workshop that I think is really important to this board that we might want to expand on and get more information on is redefining ready. And Peter actually was able to get for me the data that they use. These presented provide very specific data that assists a school district in creating a scorecard for themselves and leverage data to ensure that every student is college and career-ready. So, and they've now developed a middle school and elementary scorecard. An interesting data point for me, that one of the main indicators to readiness is the completion of Algebra II. Amazing. And so we should consider teaching that in eighth grade maybe. But anyway, I know we all laugh about that. And then we spoke with the Equal Opportunity School individuals who worked with Verona and how they did that. And I think that is definitely worth pursuing and have a discussion about. The 20 Ways to Save Energy in 2020 was also interesting information. It's a great handout because it has a list of 20 things. I went to a program on mental health services in schools. They're actually bringing the services into the schools themselves. And they have data showing great success with this, kids are doing better. And then the Leadership for Equity, Closing the Opportunity Gap for Students of Color. They discussed the development of an action plan to recruit and support underrepresented, underrepresented, presented students by using student and teacher survey data to identify access barriers and cultural issues. It was based on the things that we're working on and our strategic plan. A lot of these people are really incredibly good resource people that I think as we do board workshops, we may want to consider having a discussion with them, particularly the people that are working on closing the achievement gap and have been working in Verona. I think that would be really helpful. What's your, what was your thought?
Well, yeah, I also thought the Equal Opportunity Schools people and the other conferences I went to all confirmed that our leveling up with, by, you know, eliminating the honors at freshman year was the way to go to, to create more access. So it was just nice to have that confirmed. And there's a lot of other research I'd read before we even made that decision, obviously, but it was just, it was like, oh yeah, good move, you know, that's, that's one of the first steps you take is to try to level up. And I, that was helpful. And I, I felt like the reason I picked up that information on the equity, Equal Opportunity Schools is because I felt like some of what they do really would coordinate. And I said, with our initiatives that we already have going on and maybe expand upon them, so it's just worth keeping in mind. Yeah, I thought, I, it was as usual, a lot of thought provoking and kind of, yeah, inspirational, helpful sessions, so very worthwhile.
Any last have any more thoughts? Can you handle that? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Moving to Teaching Line Equity Committee.
Teaching Line Equity Committee met last night at the 11th and looked at creating either a policy or a statement. And we came to an agreement that we are going to work on the statement from the school district, and we've made a lot of progress, made a lot of good progress. And our next meeting will be the 10th of March, where we'll review what we came up with yesterday and then move forward and hopefully have something new submit to the policy committee and to the board after that.
Susan.
Eric, I just wanted to ask, and again, that was an excellent discussion last night. Having gone to the equity meetings, particularly the one we went to in DeForest in winter, your committee is really just poised on the edge to do this work. Would it be helpful to have, you know, just somebody like Percy Brown, just facilitate that discussion? Because they know, when they worked with us in that workshop, the pre-workshop at WSB, they took 200 people in the room and molded us into developing the major thoughts that should be in an equity statement. It just helps you do that, helps you put that language together in a format that's readable. And that was really the first time I had seen the WSB equity statement, which, I mean, is pretty strongly supported by those people and is a starting point. But they have been, they show so much expertise in, the other thing is you have a lot of thoughts and things, and when you're chairing, it's a lot more difficult to participate. So to have somebody that lets you be a full-fledged voice on that committee, I think would be helpful, but it's just a thought.
Couldn't disagree more. I, I really think that our committee functions well without a facilitator. I know I've talked to Dan about bringing one in a couple of times, and I like the dynamic we have without one. And my concern with bringing a facilitator, it would take away some of the thoughts and creativity of the different people we have on the committee that contribute. And I'm pretty pleased with what we came up with last night. I also personally don't work well with a facilitator because I like to facilitate. So I don't think it would match my personality that well.
But I, again, I think if you had had the opportunity to kind of see this work in this three-hour session and how they were able to bring out, I mean, when you look at the mixture of the type of people that are on school boards and you're thinking, how are they going to put a really commendable product together? It's just a...
I hear, I hear what you're saying. I think we have a good product.
I was at the DeForest thing also, and that was excellent and all these sessions I've been to, but I, I agree, I thought the discussion last night was very good. And, you know, I walked in thinking, let's just do the, I really liked the WSB thing and I thought, I'm good with that. But people kept bringing up different ideas and it made me think differently and I thought it was a good discussion, so I'm happy with it too. I mean, we left with the raw product, we didn't leave with the finished thing, but that wasn't necessarily, it was, but it's raw on the way. And I felt like we got a lot of good input, so I thought it was a good.
I'm in agreement. And I think that we should work with our own committee because I think they have expertise, you know, and they know. And then we also have, we directly know what the issues that we're dealing with, rather than having a facilitator who's outside, so I...
But you weren't there, you didn't have to read the final product, it was so difficult to read. I just went, oh my gosh. I know you're going to step back.
I welcome the, I welcome this discussion.
I liked it, just so you know.
Oh, I love the discussion and the ideas, it just is not really readable yet.
I also like the idea of having the statement and the policy. I thought that was a great idea.
Yes, I think so too, yeah.
And that came from that workshop, Percy Brown.
But I thought it was well-run and I like how you jumped right in and started typing, so not to discuss this.
Sorry, I missed it.
Next time, it was more discussion next time.
All right. Moving on to Personnel Committee.
We met today, that's why I'm a little blurry. Started at 3:30 until almost 6 o'clock for our board meeting. And we are negotiating, we presented them the MGA with another proposal and talked about our rationale for it, and they are taking it under advisement. And unfortunately, we couldn't set another meeting date until mid-March, so, but we're, so we'll see if we've made some progress, we're not sure. But I felt like it was a good meeting and I felt like they, you know, we talked about our budget constraints that are very real and what our limitations are, and I felt like it was a good discussion today, so we'll see where that goes.
All right. Moving on to ADHOC, Peter.
ADHOC Sustainability Meeting Committee met February 3rd. It was, you know, just a working meeting where we sat and discussed progress we made and the ideas we had, and there were some interesting things. We talked about sort of an item that came up at the state convention about, you know, waste and compost, and it was kind of interesting. What they're doing in Milwaukee, it got kind of, people kind of interested in that aspect of it. Some of our work groups talked to, well, talked to, particularly, there was a very detailed plan that we'll be looking at in more detail in the future, put together by our students on the committee relative to, you know, a waste stream and sustainability and disposal of waste in the, in the capture in the high school. They had really thought about that and we gave them some, we sort of thought about the next steps for them. And then the other big issue we talked about, you know, the, our colleagues at McKinstry have an interesting new hire, the fellow we used to work, who run the sustainability for all the, all the buildings and the state buildings in the state of Minnesota. And we had previously sort of put together sort of a straw man for a solar photovoltaic project. And he, he looked that over and he, he put together some funding models that, you know, how do you, I shouldn't use the word funding, I should use the word financing, because this, you know, with this kind of thing, the sustainability stuff is self-funding. The question is, how do you finance it? Because ultimately, all this stuff will pay for itself if we're doing things right. So they came up with some, some interesting financing plans, which we'll take, will develop a little bit further. And at some point, I think we'll come back to the board with sort of the rough outline of a proposal and see if there's an interest in not approving anything, but just interest that we can move forward in a particular direction and then fill out some more details. But it was, it's a working meeting and we had some very interesting discussions.
Susan.
I just want to say, that's the first of those meetings I've been able to attend, and I thought it was really interesting. And I was really impressed with the students with the amount of thought they had put into their proposal and they had some cool ideas. And I think, you know, Dan and Jared are going to follow up with them. I know, and some of them are doable right now. So it was really, it was very interesting to hear, so, yeah, good work.
In fact, yes, in fact, Jared had already taken some of the steps that they had, they had brought out, you know, completely independently. There were some things that had been done. And, yeah, right, he's, he's ahead of us in steps ahead. He's a very, you know, he's committed with a lot of people who are...
Well, he has the time to do it.
And a tremendous amount of expertise.
Yeah, yeah, clearly, yeah.
And I just let him run, I just let him run.
Now, Peter talked to the students about giving a grant for their idea, which is really funny. Yeah, I mean, it's a simple thought to go forward with to show that they're committed, it's really neat.
Well, actually, Susan, for that particular project, we suggested we go to the healthy classroom folks and look at money. And I think it's a very appropriate place to do that.
Well, it's a well, it's a well-rounded, engaged committee all the way around, I think.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to Possible Action Items. We'll move here to number two.
Yeah, so this is just a renewal. We've had this co-op for many years and so we're seeking approval for another two years.
I move approval of the WIA wrestling cooperative agreement with McFarland High School for 2020-21 and 2021-22 as presented.
Second.
Other question, which is, since they're all on the same team, who do they play? Well, actually, Susan, for that particular project, I think it suggested we go to the healthy classrooms folks and look at money, and I think it's a very appropriate place to do that.
Well, it's a well-rounded, engaged committee all the way around, I think.
All right, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to possible action items. We'll move here to number two.
Yeah, so this is just a renewal, we've had this co-op for many years, and so we're seeking approval for another two years.
I move approval of the WIA wrestling cooperative agreement with McFarland High School for 2020-21 and 2021-22 as presented.
Second.
Sorry, I'm ready.
All right, any discussion? Here and none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next.
Another cooperative agreement, this time for girls hockey. This one is technically not a renewal, because two additional schools are joining the co-op, and so the application requires a new application, and in seeking for two-year approval.
I move approval of the WIA girls hockey cooperative agreement with Stoughton, Oregon, McFarland, Evansville, Deerfield, Bodai, and Parkview High Schools for 2020-21 and 2021-22 as presented.
Another question, which is, since they're all on the same team, who do they play?
That's all one cooperative team.
Yeah, so they're primarily in the Badger Conference, and I think also, you know, some of the Big Eight schools. So many of the schools in the Madison area have co-ops, I think there are probably very few that don't. But probably, I would say a combination, primarily Badger Conference and the Big Eight.
But they have a lot of people.
Where do they meet and skate?
So, yeah, so Stoughton is the host school for...
Well, Peter, if you go to Ozzaki Rink in Cedarburg, you will see 15 girls teams come on that ice, one ride after another. Again, and our UW women's hockey team with Mark Johnson has been spectacular. There's no place to play.
And they're only, I think, it is really nice, because there are only, I think there's only one from Lodi, I mean, there are only a couple from some of these schools, and it's just nice that they can all, you know, work it out.
They can play.
Have a team.
You know, the most interesting thing would be, if we won the state championship, who keeps the ball?
That's right.
That would be something interesting to see.
It's probably like the Stanley Cup, they trade it off, take it to different bars or something.
Okay, so we had, move to second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Fourth item.
Okay, so this is, because we have so many schools involved, we actually have a formal 660301 agreement to clarify exactly what the commitment is from each school with regard to expenses and so on. There's only two schools, it's pretty easy to split, you know, down the middle. So to make it very clear, we have this formal agreement, we're asking for approval on.
Number four is to pay for number three, right?
Exactly. I move approval of the girls hockey 660301 cooperative contract agreements, Stoughton, Evanston, Dorford, Deerfield, Bodai, Parkview, and Parkview School Districts for 2020-21.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Fifth is our policy revisions, the second reading. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Did you say the policy is listed as presented?
As presented.
All second?
Second. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you guys so much. I went and spent two hours getting all the data.
She was asking a question, too.
Thank you, again, we did a lot of work, and Dan was great.
Discussion items, 2020-2021 budget timeline.
Yep, so I attached the budget calendar, obviously, it's very similar to previous years, probably the biggest change from last year to this year is that we are entering into the second year of the state budget, so we don't have to sit around and wait and see what's going to happen, we really know what that looks like.
You know, it's not enough money.
So at least we're not really, really wrong, we're just being sure it's funded. So we had a board workshop last Wednesday, and obviously had, you know, walked through some of those scenarios. So what will really happen now is we'll start working with all our buildings, and then we'll start the development process. We use a zero-based budgeting, so we're not sending out, you know, allocations, each building will work through that process, we'll compile all that information. Tonight, you will have the first opportunity to look at the preliminary staffing, certified staffing plan, you already approved the open enrollment numbers, and so the calendar just lays out what things will be coming. You all know this, but this is just a reminder to the community and the public, is that our fiscal year starts on July 1. However, we will not have our final numbers until the middle of October, so we are four or five months into our fiscal year before we really have anything finalized, especially with the third Friday being, the third Friday in September, really determining our enrollment and determine how much money we are able to collect between property taxes and equalization aid. So we'll continue to keep the board informed along the way, finding out where we're at with renewal rates. We obviously have some RFPs that will be going out, or that are out between transportation, and we look at auditor RFPs, so there might be some additional savings there that help with the budget. We're continuing to track enrollments, and we'll work with buildings to monitor that as well. So, but ultimately, the board will have to approve a preliminary budget before June 30th, and then they will approve, you guys will approve a final budget after all the... I'm also released in the middle of October, prior to the beginning of November, except the tax levy.
Thank you, Jared, this is a great document, it's really helpful, thank you.
So I guess, Jared, you're up for the second one, 2020-2021 preliminary certified staff.
Actually, that's me.
He said he was leading into it.
Well, Jared, okay, actually, I want to be clear about who puts the documents together. The first one is one that Jared already prepared for you, the planning document to use for the open enrollment seats, but that also provides very detailed information about our enrollment projections, and along with all of our class size guidelines, okay? So I just want to be clear about the process with regard to the staffing plan and being the, that's a preliminary plan. On the second document, you'll notice, it's basically moving all of our current FTEs, status quo for next year. Some of these are likely to change slightly by our next meeting in March. The ones for grades K through eight, we, right now, based on our current projections, you'll see that we always have those adjustments. If you have, you know, five sections in second grade, when they move to third grade, we'll need five sections, and they might be four, and so that's just based upon those enrollment numbers. But the real changes are, first of all, the high school, the high school students will have completed their initial course requests by next month, so Dr. Ross will be bringing forth, based upon that, any potential changes in staffing needs at the high school. Oftentimes, our part-time positions might change by, you know, some partial FTEs and so on. So we'll have some updated information for you on that to consider. But the other important thing is, even in March, we'll still list it as a preliminary plan, because some of the other things that vary throughout the year or throughout the spring, some of our student services staff, particularly, special ed staffing is based, you know, very much on student needs and IP needs. And so ultimately, every teacher contract, you always approve, the idea of this plan is to give you a heads up if there's any changes coming, you know? And particularly, if we're looking to add a new positions or reducing positions, we want you to be aware of that. And so at this point, we're still in those discussions about exactly what those needs are, so you see, in this case, it's still, this is a status quo. If there are any changes to it next month, we'll explain the rationale for those changes. And then the last thing on there, you know, it's a question mark, just a preliminary discussion about the administrative staff as we move forward, the transition, you know, to the new school. So there's not a recommendation on here, but there's an opportunity if you have any questions or comments, you know, regarding.
Dean, how important would it, is it to have a transition with a principal coming in at a new school, to have a year of maybe planning time for that principal, to kind of get familiar with the district and the students, and so that transition is ready to go with the new school?
Yeah, I guess, to me, that the biggest positive of having that in place is the opportunity to develop relationships with the teaching staff, and get to know the students as well, of course, is important. You know, when we look about planning, okay, things about putting together, all the things that principals do, working with staff on master schedules and so on, that's one thing. But also, all the things that our principals do on a regular basis, all of our professional development, you know, working with team meetings and so on, to be able to participate those and really understand how things work and get to know our staff, I think is the biggest advantage with that. You know, so, so it's certainly something that is a strong consideration that would really, I think, help, you know, moving into that opening of the new school.
Is there, oh, I'm sorry, I was going to say, is there, is that within the budget that we'd be able to support that position in a transition year? Because essentially, we have two principals at one school, knowing that one would be transitioning.
Yeah, so in the, along with the Phil Stiller's referendum, of course, there was an operational question, so are there additional funds to operate the new school? Majority of that is for staffing, it's also for, you know, building maintenance and so on. And so we actually do have the opportunity to levy that money the year before, and can use it for, you know, so some of it are for things specific that will relate to the new school, others there might be some one-time purchases or expenditures for that first year. And so, so when the new school opens, that position is part of that operational, and it would just be a year early, so.
Yep, so part of the budget that I had presented, I didn't include that, because that is some conversation that was happening, so that number that you saw doesn't include that, because we have ability to, to run on current.
The question is, given the anticipated change in leadership at the high school, and the particularly large shoes that Paul fills, if, it might be a good time for us to take a look at, if we're going to talk about next week about staffing plan, to look at, to give us, for you to give us an overview of the leadership team at the high school, and how that works, and the responsibilities of the people involved. And because I don't want to overlook an opportunity, if we can make some, I think we can make some adjustments, and we can, like I said, with new leadership coming in, you know, to look at the way we do business there. And so I'm hoping that you can give us a little more detail of the leadership team at the high school, and how do I relate to the staffing plan, you know, any hiring that we're going to do in that position.
I'd be interested in that, too. Do you, did you already give us to us a timeframe or a search on the hiring?
No, I have not, so I'll be sharing that out very soon, we're put, finalizing that this week.
What was the question?
The timeline for the high school principal search process.
And Paul's date, I don't know, just waiting.
June 30th, so the new position begins July 1st.
So you don't even have that summer transition? Okay.
All right, move to the facilities planning update.
Okay, report is fairly short, because at this point, it's just a matter of seeking final approval on our projects that are moving forward for the summer. So the renovations are right on schedule, and all the approvals that we've need have occurred on time. We might, you might recall that specifically with Winnicott, okay, because of the renovations that happened, it required to go through, you know, a planning commission and the city council, likewise with the clay special drumming for the addition, so those things have happened. One of the things I would want to make note of there is, as far as the communication with our staff, and so that's one of the things that Findorf will lead and do an extra job working with our staff to actually present at each of the buildings this spring, so our staff know what is coming exactly, and how things will be impacted. Our staff have been briefed, of course, you know, several times, from the principals, and at times, time from the rest of us, but to actually go in with the details, so it's something that's a good opportunity to make sure everyone understands exactly what works is being done, and how it might impact their classrooms and so on. And so, you know, so the renovations, like I said, are right on schedule, and then, of course, we know that we need to wrap up our work with the Village of Caddis Grove, you know, we already developed a plant agreement and so on.
I just had a question about Winnicott, because I heard you say at the Edgermaine this morning that the most of the renovation parts will take place this summer, does that include the, and that we figured out what we have to do about the water seepage, so does that include that? Will that be done this summer?
I want Jared to answer that, he was...
As of right now, the plan is yes.
Okay, and what, and what do we, I mean, we know how high we have to raise the floor, is that still the floor?
So we'll be raising the custodial room floor up, but in addition to that, we will have to be digging down along all our properties and laying new pipe, which does present a huge problem, because based on how deep we have to go, and based on other property features, we can only, or contractor can only dig in the spots because of the confined space area, and then the collapsing of soil, and obviously, so it's going to be a pretty, labor-intensive, complicated process. So as of right now, we're on schedule to start, and Hopperg will be doing most of the earthwork, and then obviously, we do have to break up some concrete, and you know where the room is located in, there's no easy way of getting that stuff out, so it's going to be lots of man-hours. So that concrete has to be broken up into smaller pieces, because there's not a machine that can get through there and get it out. And then obviously, we have to pump all the concrete in, so the plan of it is, is that it will all be done this summer, and a full band room and stuff to start school, so.
And then, will there be additional sump pumps put in, too?
So there will have to be additional sump pumps, to make sure all the sump pumps are working. But part of the problem that we discovered is that there are those drain tiles underneath the building, they're just so old that they're full of soil, and they've just broken down over time, so all that has to be replaced.
Have we had water in, I mean, the mechanical room itself, too? I don't know why we wouldn't have, but I've never, I've always just heard about the band room, but I'm just wondering.
There's always been a running water in the mechanical room, and so that's part of the reason. So we do believe that most of, for us, that just be raised in the mechanical room, and we won't have to raise the floor in the band room, as long as we put in all the correct things. So that's where we're working, so we've worked with a hydrologist, and then obviously, our EUA, and all that civil engineers to find a plan that does not allow water back in that building.
That'd be great.
I don't really want to hear water in that building ever again.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, but obviously, with the snow that we have, that might add more of uniqueness to it, but the plan is this summer.
So we're not going to be building additions onto that building towards the swamp, then?
No.
Okay.
I'm going to have to put, not stills.
This school is kind of floating there, isn't it, just a little bit?
So, Dan, would you post, again, when we get the building updates, would you just post the timeframe that they always get, so that we don't have to go back and look for it all the time? And then, by doing that, if anything's changed, you can just update it, or if there's anything added? And then, did you say today that they were, they were going to work this summer and next summer?
Yeah.
And that basically going to be, yeah, and then they're going to hold summer school in the Nichols up here? Okay, okay.
One other thing, I'm sorry, that I should have pointed out, I mentioned about having the informational meetings for our staff, and just wanted to also, you know, point out that we'll have those similar engagement opportunities with our stakeholders and community members also.
Good.
All right, moving to future meeting dates.
One that I'd like to point out, the one I read there, on March 16th, we had some email exchanges and looking for our next board workshop on long-range budget planning, we do have some guests involved, and so that's one of the channels of trying to find dates. And so I think most of you have responded, if not all, but we'd just like to confirm right now that March 16th is available for everyone, and we do need to begin at 5:30.
16?
March 16th.
It's a Monday.
Monday, yes.
Did you say 5:30 again?
Yes.
And then, Dan, when is your plan to try and renew dates for the other two things that we had?
Yeah, so definitely, we'll have some email correspondence for you, we won't wait till next month, but we'll get, I need, I've got, I'll have some information to share here before the end of the week.
No, I just think with spring break, then, sooner we start giving you available dates. I mean, right now, we might still be able to get things scheduled in February, but maybe not.
Okay, hope we have more items to take care of, so I'd like to have a motion to recommit a closed session for agenda IMC, for inclusion, our consideration of enumerated subjects of business.
Sorry.
Yes, you have to...
Yes.
Hi.
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 Hi. Let's see, yes.
All right. Move to closed session.